Hi, everybody. My name is Emily Larson and I am the Mayor of the City of Duluth. Thank you for your trust and your support in my first term. I am here today to ask for your support to continue the work we are doing together. When I ran four years ago, I ran on the promise that we would write this next chapter together, and we have. Together, we wrote a new comprehensive plan to position our city to be successful and strong and resilient and vibrant until 2035. It's called Imagine Duluth 2035, and many of you participated in the thousands of surveys we collected in the hundreds of meetings and input sessions, and you will see the impact of your voice and your values in the direction of this community. When I took office, I promised to deliver in four specific areas. The first is streets. When I took office as Mayor, we did not have a dedicated long-term funding source for streets. Now, four years later, we have $10 million fully dedicated to streets that I can't use and any future Mayor cannot use for anything else. It is for your streets. We made that plan and we passed it together. It's the fully dedicated 0.5% sales tax. So next year, when it goes into effect, you will see miles getting reconstructed across the city, and it's because of you and our commitment to each other. I promised that I would prioritize housing, and we have. We have delivered 1,000 new units of housing into this community, and we have so much more work to do, especially for affordability. We need affordable housing units for seniors, for students, for young families, and we need it across the city. That is why I now have a Mayor's Task Force committed to developing affordable housing strategies in the City of Duluth. It's why I was placed on the Governor's Task Force for Housing to deliver on statewide strategies. It's why, for the first time ever, the City of Duluth will actually have a housing developer on staff, because I know that we have to prioritize with our people and our policies and our funding investments to address the issues that are critical to this community. I promised that I would prioritize energy efficiency and climate resilience, and we have. From decreasing our dependence on coal to increasing our reliance on renewables, by expanding our district energy to include the new hospital district system, by incorporating electric car charging stations and making the improvements to our facilities, we continue to lead the state in this area. Despite the lack of federal leadership, we are committed to the Paris Accord. We will decrease our greenhouse gases 80% by 2050, and in fact, we will decrease them more than 15% by the end of next year. So we've gotten a lot of great work done, and together, we've built a very important foundation for this community to continue to thrive. I know that we are moving in the right direction, and this is why. We now have expanded youth programming in our parks that your neighborhoods and your families are using that are free of charge, and you're letting me know that's the right direction. We have $1.1 billion of investment going in downtown in the medical district community. We have hundreds of housing units just about to come online, and we have opportunities that are coming to us, whether it is to host new events like the Catalyst Festival or the Tall Ships Event, whether it is next year positioning ourselves to be successful with the United States Naval Commissioning, whether it is continuing to expand the important workforce development achievements that we already are making and need to accelerate. Join me. We're on the right path. Have I been perfect? Nope. And I have continued to serve you to the best of my ability with all that I have, because I believe in where we are going. I know we are moving forward, and I know that we do our best work when we move forward together. Thanks for listening. Thanks for caring. Thanks for investing your time, your vision, your money, your family into this community. I live here right with you and I'm so proud of the work we're doing. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Nolli, a candidate for Duluth Mayor. Thank you for the time to visit with you today, and thank you to Duluth's Public Access TV for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm a lifelong student of leadership. Over 20 of those years, we're in an executive leadership capacity with a youth leadership organization, seven of them here most recently in Duluth. Along the way, I learned plenty of lessons. There's a saying that goes something along the lines of "leadership or life lessons come from experience, and experience comes from making mistakes." I won't get into all of those lessons today. Rather, I'd like to share with you just one leadership lesson. This morning, I was taking a peek at Facebook, and I came across the Memories Post, and I was reminded that seven years ago today, I was in a second-grade classroom. Couldn't tell you which school it was or which classroom it was, but I'm quite certain it was here in Duluth. You see, every fall, we would visit every single elementary school classroom and every single elementary school building throughout the region, and we would get the young people excited about spending time with their friends. We weren't talking to them about building their character or becoming citizens or learning fitness tools. We were talking to them about having fun in the outdoors with their buddies. We talked about hiking and camping and fishing and all those sorts of adventures that young people love to have. And as I was finishing up that day, one student, a young man, reaches up and he tugs on my jacket. And he says to me, "Hey, mister, mister, mister." You see, he was really excited. Says, "Mister, are you gonna be our leader?" I thought to myself for a moment, "Well, not really. It's gonna be one of your parents or one of your friends' parents or somebody from your community." But before I could even finish or come up with an answer to his question, he said, "I really wanna come tonight. I wanna do all those cool things, but my dad, my dad and my brother are in prison." His dad and his brother were in prison, and this seven or eight-year-old is asking me, some guy in the front of the classroom whom he'd never met before, to be his leader. It was a humbling experience that day. I answered him. I told him I'd be at the sign-up meeting that night. I told him that we would make sure that he had a leader, but I went a step further. I told him, and I told the rest of that classroom, that he's the leader. You see, anyone can exercise leadership at any time. I could've spent my time here today talking with you about challenges or opportunities or strengths or threats that we have here for Duluth, but I decided to take the time to relate to you that lesson in leadership that I experienced and was reminded of this morning of that young man. I don't know if he stuck with the program, but what I do know is that he was and is a leader. Together, we can provide leadership to our young people for our community. Our forefathers, the people before us here in Duluth, gave us the great infrastructure, the great community that we call home. It's our duty to provide that leadership to the young people for the future. Let's move beyond whatever our challenge or gripe might be of the day, be it a pothole, be it a challenge that we experience in our neighborhood or our community, and let's come together and provide leadership for our young people and for our future.
My name is Eric Forzeman. I'm honored to have served you these past 14 months as your At-Large City Councilor here in Duluth. I was humbled to be the top vote-getter in the primary election this August and am grateful for the trust that you've placed in me thus far. I've gone directly to Duluthians during this campaign, knocking on over 1,100 doors personally since June. I've heard the sounds of the Lake Superior Mississippi Railroad in West Duluth, felt the breeze off the lake on Park Point. I got hustled for a $2 rock in Woodland when I thought I was stopping at a lemonade stand, and I heard the sounds of a Bayfront concert while out in Observation Hill. Every neighborhood is unique. They all have their own character, their own opportunities and challenges. I listened to families in Kenwood during college move-in weekend share their concerns around speeding cars. I listened to Lakeside residents who wanted to share their ideas about how we can work together to help try to save Lester Park Golf Course. I listened to Norton Park folks who wanna see more safe activities for kids out in West Duluth. Despite our uniquenesses, there are so many things that bind our neighborhoods together. Parents in Morgan Park and Chester Park wanna see safe neighborhoods for their kids. Seniors on a fixed income in Denfeld and the Heights wanna make sure that we are making choices that spend your tax dollars wisely. And doing more for the environment and investing in our parks is something that is shared across the Central Hillside and Smithville. And the roads need work in Piedmont and everywhere else in this city. But above all else, what I have heard from you while I've been out talking with you is an overwhelming sense of belief in our city, a belief that Duluth has turned a corner, and a belief that Duluth is firmly in control of our own destiny and our own future. We can use the street sales tax funding to finally make a dent in the potholes and be transparent about how we're spending that money in the process. We can revitalize the U.S. Steel site in Morgan Park, what was the economic heartbeat of our city for decades, and bring good-paying jobs and environmental cleanup to West Duluth. We can work with the school board to get the central high school site finally sold and repurposed into something of value for our community. We can leverage the billion-dollar public and private investment that we're seeing in our medical district in order to create more investment, more housing, and more childcare options throughout the hillside. We can work with partners like the Northland Foundation and our higher ed institutions, as well as private industry, to try to create a more entrepreneurial culture in our city and make it easier to start a small business in Duluth. We can use our growing tax base to invest in our staffing numbers for public safety, to help clean up more blight, and to invest in recreational amenities that residents can enjoy. And we can increase our conservation efforts at Comfort Systems so that we can shrink our carbon footprint and so that you, as residents, can help save money on your bill in the process. We can be an even more welcoming community for all and address very real perceptions of public safety challenges in places like our downtown. And we can become a city where you can have a child and you don't have to worry about quitting your job because of the fact that we're gonna bring more childcare options that are affordable and high-quality to our city. Most mornings, I wake up to the sounds of my two kids. Their boundless energy and optimism make for earlier wake-up calls than I would prefer and the need for strong coffee. But in those moments, they remind me why I love serving as your city councilor. They believe that anything is possible, and here in Duluth, we do too. I am so excited, as your councilor, to keep working to move us forward toward that vision of a brighter future and work with residents across the city to help make this beautiful place that we call home even better. I'm Eric Forzeman. I'm honored to have served as your city councilor-at-large. I've worked hard to show up for Duluth, and I bring my experience as an economic developer, a pragmatic leader, and a bridge builder across not only the city but the state of Minnesota to the council. I hope to continue serving you for four more years, and thank you for your time.
I'm Noah Hobbs. I'm currently a Duluth City Councilor-at-large and the Duluth City Council President. I moved to Duluth in 2007 to attend UMD, where I graduated, but most importantly, met my wife, Tricia. We've been involved in the community ever since. We bought our home in West Duluth in 2012, and my role in community service has looked very different from whether it's being the Chair or the President of Merritt Park Community Club, Board Service to Chum, PAVSA, or my church council. And now, currently, in the past three years, I've been able to serve the City of Duluth as a city councilor and currently as city council president. I think we've accomplished a lot over the past three years, some of which has been investing over $1 billion in private investment just east of our downtown, investing over $50 million into our river corridor. We've created a more intuitive regulatory environment through the Red Tape Reduction Task Force that I chaired and commissioned. We've created the ordinance to allow transportation network companies to operate here in Duluth, whether that's Uber or Lyft. We've also allowed for e-scooters and bike share. We've invested an additional $1 million into our streets, bringing that total up to $3 million total, and after 2020, it'll be up to $10 million total. So we're taking care of our streets and also what is beneath it with a 100-year sustainable water line replacement plan. I think that our future may lie beyond our vision, but certainly not beyond our control. In the next four years, I'll continue to work on addressing our housing shortage. During my day job, I'm a housing professional. I have a deep understanding on the financing and realistic steps to get that process done and how to best leverage our community partners, engage stakeholders, whether it be the state or federal government as well. And while the issues may be large that I just listed addressing housing, opioid crisis, I also pride myself on constituent outreach, whether it's through 100 Cups of Coffee Initiative, addressing parking issues in neighborhoods, making sure that streetlights are repaired. I like to do the small things as well as a city councilor. I've never shied away from difficult conversations in our community and will continue to work collaboratively and in a positive manner to find common ground to move our city forward. I look forward to Duluth, forward to Duluth to continuing to make progress as a city, and I truly believe that we are in a better position today than we were four years ago. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Mayo. I'm a lifelong Duluthian, a community organizer, a product of a union family, and a proud student at our very own University of Minnesota Duluth. And I'm running to be your city council member-at-large so that we can move Duluth forward together. Growing up, I remember tagging along with my dad to his union meetings. We would eat pancakes, enjoy conversation, and do whatever it was that we did at meetings. But the most important part of that meeting and getting to start organizing with my dad was that we stood shoulder to shoulder and fought for things such as saving six-day delivery for our local post office workers. We also fought to keep our local post offices open, and that's where I got my start organizing. Since then, I haven't stopped organizing. From city council to presidential campaigns, I'm an organizer. And Duluth, we need to be organizing. Now is the time for community-focused leadership, leadership that stands up for working people, families, young folks, and those that are often left by the sidelines in the political process. I'm ready to be that leader. It's time we stand up and devise solutions involving community partners to address our affordable housing crisis locally. A person moving to Duluth or starting a career here should be able to choose the neighborhood that they want to live in. No one person can find a solution that's going to solve this crisis for us, but together, along with community partners and local and state organizations, we can make meaningful steps. We can also raise our minimum wage to a living wage. Our workers deserve to be paid fairly so that everyone can afford a living wage while working full-time. When the average living wage in our area, in our county, is $18.34 an hour and our state minimum is $10, we need to push for raises for our local workers. And finally, we must protect our environment for generations to come. My grandchildren and the generations to come after me deserve to live in the same Duluth that we live in today, and we need to protect and preserve that. So we have this beautiful, beautiful lake, one of the largest freshwater bodies in the whole entire world, and we need to protect that and our unrivaled green space in Duluth for generations. Duluth has been through a lot over this past century and even over this past decade. After dealing with crises such as the closure of the steel plant in the 1970s and with our city dipping into a depression in the 1980s, Duluth survived. And how did we do that? We did it by focusing on what Duluth can offer, and one of those things was our Great Lake. Along with that, we're in a rebound because we're focusing on our greatest asset, Lake Superior, while also focusing on aviation, healthcare, and education. Duluth has a go-getter fighting spirit, and that deserves to be recognized. Duluth, I'm ready to fight, and I'm ready to lead with you as your next city councilor. We can do this together. My name is Mike Mayo. I'm a lifelong Duluthian, a community organizer, and I look forward to earning your support as your next city councilor in Duluth, the zenith city of the unsalted seas.
Hello, neighbors. My name is Gary Anderson, and I am currently the District One City Councilor for the City of Duluth, and it's great to be here again on PAC TV. Today, I wanna talk about some exciting things that are happening in the First District, especially celebrating education. In the last couple of years, we've had two schools relocate into the district. Many Rivers Montessori School moved into the former Woodland Hills site up in Woodland, and they are bringing a great deal of wonderful energy to the neighborhood. They've invested millions of dollars in their facility, and now we have families and kids showing up in the Woodland neighborhood every day, supporting our small businesses and bringing that great energy to the neighborhood. Down in Lakeside, we also have the New Spirit of the Lakes School, which has transferred into the Lakeside neighborhood, and it's really exciting to see the investment that this community is making in renovating that building and, again, bringing all kinds of families and kids into the neighborhood. It's one of the really exciting things that we see happening all over our community, but I think especially in Woodland and in Lakeside, is that young families are finding that Duluth is really a place where they want to stay, where they want to grow their families, and where they see themselves thriving. So what's really exciting, I think this is a really big change that we've seen over the last 10 to 15 years or so. A challenge that we have in front of us today is the issue of the Lester Park Golf Course, and this is a case where I've put myself as your district councilor right in the middle of this really challenging conversation. Fortunately, we have city councilors and city administration and especially community members who are really caring and giving their time to help us come up with a really great solution to protecting the availability of public golf in the city and protecting our valuable green spaces, and finally, also looking at options as to how we can create housing for all. So it's a great time to live in this beautiful city. The housing challenge that we have in front of us, I think, is one of the biggest challenges that we face. We need housing for everybody, from our poorest neighbors with the lowest incomes to seniors who want to retire in their own neighborhoods. So we need to continue to focus on this incredible challenge, but fortunately, we also have great partnerships with St. Louis County and the State of Minnesota, our residents, our developers, and our city administration and city council. I've been spending a lot of time out of doors lately. I have a new poodle. I like to call him an extraordinary standard poodle. His name given to him by the people who brought him into the world was Hunter, and I live in Hunter's Park, so it's been really great to see many of you out on the street, walking my dog Hunter and saying hello to you with your dogs and your families. I hope to see all of you at the Lester Rendezvous. I hope if this film gets aired before September 28th, that's when the rendezvous is. Also, make sure to get up to Hawks Ridge this fall. Hawks Ridge is gonna have something like a quarter of a million visitors up there. It's amazing thing that's happening right here in the First District, and they're even expanding their influence to Anger Park and to Thompson Hill. So much great success to all the people who work so hard to make Hawks Ridge a great success for us all. Finally, I just wanna say that as your city councilor, I really try to be available and accessible to all of our district residents. So you can reach me through the city council website, ganderson@duluthamen.gov, or give me a call on my cellphone number, which is published on the city council webpage. So thank you so much for listening today. Enjoy the fall season, and I'll see you soon.
Hi, I'm Becky Holland. I'm running for city council in the First District. Thank you for taking a few moments to hear the common sense differences I hope to bring to our city government. During this campaign, I've knocked on thousands of doors, and I have so enjoyed chatting with many of you. Everyone agrees that Duluth is a wonderful community, but we have some challenges that aren't being addressed. We need to get serious about refocusing city government on the basics. By far, the biggest concern our citizens have is for the safety of their families. There have been too many break-ins or worse in the First District, and many of you say you've never felt so unsafe in your own homes. It happened in our house in August. I was door-knocking out on a warm day, and we had our windows open back home. My son was at home, and he heard a noise, and when he went to look, he saw somebody who had pulled off one of our screens and was crawling through that window. It was quite frightening. Fortunately, he was able to chase off the intruder, but yet, it's still scary to think about that happening in our home. When I mentioned people's safety fears at a recent candidate forum, my opponent in this race dismissed those concerns and said statistics show that crime is down. I suppose statistics can say many things, but they aren't making families feel any safer. If elected, I'll advocate for more police on the streets, and I will always support properly protecting them. Remember when the police department asked for permission to purchase protective gear last year? Many of us were stunned by the high-minded and dangerous positions taken by some city councilors in disputing that need. That kind of overstep has become a too-frequent occurrence on city council, and it's something I'll work to reverse. We also shouldn't be putting up roadblocks and increasing taxes that undermine small businesses that employ so many Duluthians. The latest example of this was consideration of a nickel charge for a grocery bag and then fining companies hundreds of dollars if they didn't comply. Is this really where we should be spending our energy? I will also work to remind my council colleagues that we're here to focus on Duluth and on Duluthians. That's our job. We should not be passing resolutions about activities half a world away or condemning private businesses in other cities and states. A term that comes from fishing, something my husband and I love to do, applies here as well. Watch your own bobber. We moved to the First District 18 years ago, my husband and I, and raised our five wonderful kids here. Four of them now live out of the house and have moved away, and like most parents, we hope they can find good jobs and return here. I'll work to provide a better environment for businesses to operate and create jobs, hopefully bring everyone's kids back here if they wanna return here. City government doesn't create those good-paying jobs themselves, but government can definitely pave the way for job creation. Easier permitting, low business taxes, less interference. My campaign is families first and second, because everything that's important to you and me revolves around our family. We can make Duluth the safest, most affordable, and opportunity-filled place for all families, but it requires changing how city council approaches things. I would be honored to help make those changes happen. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Teresa O'Halloran-Johnson, and I am running for city council in Duluth's Third District. I wanna tell you a little bit about myself. I have lived in the district almost 12 years. I work in downtown Duluth at the St. Louis County Public Health and Human Services. I support children with intellectual disabilities, and I live in the East End, and I often walk to work almost every day. So I'm very familiar with the district geographically. I also have been very active with my union at work and have really been called to service in my community through some of the community engagements that I've involved myself in. One of them is Hill Fest. I've been involved almost from its first year. I have also been involved in the Clayton Jackson McGee Board and serving as their secretary for a period of time, and then also on the Earn Safe and Sick Time Task Force. I'm running for city council in the Third District because I feel like we really need to pay attention to our local issues. We have a lot on our plate here in the City of Duluth. We've got a lot going on, a lot of really good things, but we need to make sure that the concerns of the city and the concerns of the people of the Third District are being heard and that the city is aware of them. We have some exciting things happening, like New Win Market and the expansion of the Essentia Hospital, but those things can also be disruptive. We've got streets being fixed in downtown Duluth, which is fantastic. We're glad to see that we've got the infrastructure work happening, but we need to make sure that our infrastructure works for people and business, and we have other big infrastructure issues really facing us. And we have other big infrastructure issues really facing us right now. In particular, our beachfront, which is eroding, and record-high lake levels, which are having a really just profound impact on our neighbors in Park Point. I think it's important that we recognize that all neighborhoods need to be safe, all neighborhoods need to have disability and elder access, and all neighborhoods need to have affordable transportation and housing. Housing, 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 it's one of the things I hear everywhere I go in the city. Folks want to move out of their family homes and still continue to live in the core of the city so that they can continue to be a part of the vibrant life here. We need to make sure that we're doing things to attract good, solid housing opportunities and development in the city and in the Third District. I'm somebody who's gonna keep paying attention to the city of Duluth and the Third District. I'm somebody who's gonna get back to you when you call and email me, and I'm somebody who can work well with others. So I really feel like I would be a great city councillor, and I hope to get your support in November.
Hi, my name is Roz Randorf, and I'm running for city council, District 3, because I believe I can make a difference. So a lot has happened in Duluth over the past few weeks, and what has happened has really resonated and highlighted our belief that Duluth can be better and safer and a healthier environment. First, affordable housing. We talk a lot about affordable housing in my campaign, and when I talk about affordable housing, what I mean is decent housing that people can afford to live in. The fire at the synagogue on Third Street, set by a person who was experiencing homelessness and mental health issues, was a tragedy on all levels. We must create a sustainable solution. We must work with Lee Stewart and Joel Kilgore in HRA to create a local solution. We also need help from our state and our federal government. We can't do this alone. We need federal and state funding to do it. This is a national crisis. And a livable wage. We need a livable wage to help solve this problem. We need to make sure people can earn a living wage. That means attracting new industry in Duluth. We must support one of our biggest assets, the Duluth Seaport. Boy, we have ship and truck and rail, and we can create jobs, living wage jobs, that earn $60,000 a year or more with little post-high school education or none. We need to also support our collective bargaining rights. We need to help create a system that values sustainable and livable wages. It's good for business, and it's good for workers. We need to attract and retain the best. Our Minnesota Nursing Association and our Duluth Police Union are prime examples. We need to compete with the metro area. We can't lose our talent to the cities. And our legislators, they need to step up. We need to have at the state and federal level an increase in our minimum wage. We need to go to $15, and they need to help us do that. My next priority, this comes directly from the neighborhoods. Three out of every four doors that I knock on, three out of every four say, "Roz, please protect Lake Superior." It's important. Our water is important. This issue is unfolding in the courts. The concerns about the water, Duluth depends on it. We need to keep our waterways protected, and I stand with all the residents, I stand with all of our businesses, and the scientists in support of our Lake Superior watershed district. And finally, I want to thank all of you, the voters, for coming out, for putting out my signs, for helping me really lead in the primary. I'm grateful. And I'm not sitting back on my laurels. I am gonna continue to door knock, and I promise I want to meet with you, and I want to meet with all of the voters in the district, because I want to be your city councillor. In the heart of the city, District 3, I want to be your voice. I want to cut through the clutter. I want to bring all the diverse voices together. I want to listen, bring ideas to the table, and together collaborate to make Duluth better, safer, and healthier city. My name is Roz Randorf, and I want to be your city councillor in District 3.
Hello, my name is Janice Kennedy, and I'm running for District 5 Duluth City Council. I'm running because it's time we make a difference together in building a Western community of neighborhoods with opportunities for everyone to live, work, and play. As a lifelong Duluthian, I have deep roots in Western Duluth. Our family moved to Duluth in the 60s for the airbase. My father served in Korea. My uncle served in Vietnam. My brother was in the Navy and a sailor, and my grandson is currently active-duty Army Reserve. My family have served our country, our church, and our community, and I look forward to serving you as our next Duluth District 5 City Councillor. Community investment begins with community. That is why four years ago, I ran for this seat, understanding that we need more investments in Western Duluth. Today, I have a stronger vision for how we build solutions and strategies that will positively impact people's lives. Western Duluth neighbors, we deserve a councillor with a fresh vision for today, tomorrow, and generations to come. Serving as president of the Riverfront Community Development, we have had success in rebuilding Western Duluth community and business collaborations. As your next District 5 City Councillor, I will continue the work and strongly advocate for vibrant neighborhoods to enrich children, families, and individuals living in Western Duluth. Working 25 years in the medical profession as a physical therapy assistant, director of rehab, and program director for P T, O T, and speech, I have learned to negotiate with open communication to implement action reaching goals and positive outcomes. I will continue working to decrease social and economic disparities. No longer will your zip code determine if you have healthy food to eat, housing, or a safe place to play. As a city councillor, I will actively support and promote entrepreneurs and business growth that creates jobs and community-centered economic development in Western Duluth and across our city. Serving as the president of the City of Duluth Planning Commission, I understand how policies affect everyone differently, and I look forward to continuing to meet people where they are at. I will support initiatives that improve aging infrastructure, roads, and streets, as well as increased transportation connectivity to improve quality of life for everyone and safety. My experience includes policymaking at every level of government, including Imagine Duluth Comprehensive Plan, Health in All Policies, Bridging Health Duluth Community Health Needs Assessment, Toolkit for Equity Accountability, and the Duluth Police Crowd Control Safety Equipment Policy Working Group. As a trained mediator for conflict resolution, I know how to solve problems. I am receptive to ideas, and I'm committed to effective leadership that will make a difference. Owning a business, I understand how to develop a budget and allocate resources, as well as supervise, manage, direct, and coordinate people and programs. My work, education, and life experience qualify me to serve in this role, and I look forward to building on the unique assets that Western Duluth has to offer. As the only councillor with a professional medical and business background, I will focus on priorities, build solutions, and direct action for policies that improves quality of life for everyone. I am Janice Kennedy, and I am running to be your next District 5 City Councillor. Thank you for taking the time to listen to why I'm running, and remember to vote on Tuesday, November 5th.
Hello, I'm Jean Kinesny, and I'm running for Fifth District Council because of my deep desire to improve the western part of Duluth through a common sense collaborative approach to problem-solving. Western Duluth has a wealth of opportunities for business growth and economic expansion, large tracts of available land, access to water and transportation routes, and a ready workforce. For too long, the western part of Duluth has been an afterthought for developers of all types. We need to redefine how we promote manufacturing, recognizing that we aren't building steel plants anymore. Now, the manufacturing opportunities lie in new technologies. If elected, I will work with the administration and other leaders to promote our hub zones, which are historic, underutilized business zones, which exist to help small business by providing provincial treatment from government contracting officers. The business registered in the program will receive opportunities in which only hub-zone entities can submit offers. The Fifth District is rich with hub zones, and they should be promoted by the city. We have outsourced our economic development strategy and initiatives to outside sources for too many years. It's time we spent and put resources and talent into development and actively seek new businesses for the city, while continuing to nurture and grow Duluth business that needs assistance. We need to help and provide assistance from start to completion. Our strategies should not include making developers work for a decade or more to complete their project. In the next 10 years, 15,000 Duluthians will retire and stay in their homes for some years. These homes won't enter the housing market in time to make available housing for the new workforce. We need to be proactive now to ensure that we have adequate housing for retirees looking for single-story living, which will turn those homes back on the market for a younger workforce. I'm running for the Fifth District Council also to help solve the problems around our streets and infrastructure. We must conduct an inventory of all of our streets, along with the utilities under them. We have to leverage city funding with municipal state-aid street funds and the county transportation sales tax where applicable. We need to be diligent developing a maintenance and operation schedule for any new projects. We cannot afford to defer our maintenance until it's a desire situation. I'm also to take and help our police officers, firefighters, and responders with the enormous challenges they face, dealing with the epidemic of opioid use. We expect these professionals not only to do the jobs they're trained to do, but also to be social workers and the mental health advocates as well. I'm a lifelong community activist, have spent decades promoting Western Duluth and working with others to achieve our goals. I know the value of partnerships, collaboration, and just plain hard work to get things done, and that's why I'm running for the Fifth District. I would appreciate your support.
Hi, I'm Malana Oswald. I am currently holding the at-large seat on the Duluth School Board, and I'm running again to continue to do my job on the school board. I've been very passionate about equity in our education system and was one of the people that helped bring our comp ed funding to the forefront of community conversation, and that's what I'm about. I'm about representing what our community wants and how we can accomplish that within the system that we have. I'm an advocate for change, and I'm also an advocate for people that need and desire different outcomes in different situations. I pay attention, and I'm very responsive. I deal with people one-on-one and hold their hands if they need me to. Our education system is at a challenging time with our graduation rates and our disparities between different groups within our education system. I feel I am the most effective person running that can help tackle and start to change what is going on. Our graduation rates need to improve, our students of color need to be paid attention to, and everyone needs to be able to achieve, and thus, that's my campaign slogan, that our education is for everyone. It's for everyone in our community. Our community thrives when our education is the best. I really, really, really don't know what to say right now, because this is overwhelming to be staring at a camera, but I will keep going, because I do that. We have had some very challenging headlines lately, and we are going to persevere and tackle those with great community conversation as much as possible, because if you're not involved in your education system, our education system can and will fail, and I'm not about to let that happen. I'm very proud that my yard signs grace every neighborhood across many demographics and many age groups. I'm very proud that my yard sign sits along every other candidate, regardless of their political affiliation or backgrounds, because that's why I'm a good school board member. People across the spectrum of our diversity can really understand where I come from, and I advocate for everyone. So I'm Malana Oswald. That's what I do, and I want to keep doing it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Kirby, and I appreciate that you're taking time to get to know me a little bit, the visions and goals I have for Duluth Public Schools and what I see as the role of a school board member. I'm running for reelection to the Duluth School District School Board in District 2, which covers part of East Hillside, neighborhood around UMD, some of the western part of Lakeside and the Congdon area. In the almost four years I've been on the school board, I've been elected by my school board members chair twice, vice-chair for one year, and I've also been chair of the Human Resources Committee for two years. This is important, I think, because these roles have given me the opportunity to work more directly with school board members, the district administration, and teacher and other community groups. The relationships I've developed are very important when organizing solutions and programs with a wide variety of community groups and stakeholders. One question I'm often asked is, "Why are you running for the school board?" Well, I have several reasons. First, I have two children in the public schools, and they've been there since kindergarten. They are now at East High School, one a sophomore and one a senior. I've been involved in their education, volunteering in the schools during this whole time, off and on, and I hope to continue being involved in the schools this way. I have an academic background in education, having received a doctorate in education and sociology, and was teaching at the university level before I changed careers and became a physician. I retired about five years ago after practicing family practice for about 35 years. Many people in the district and the city as a whole have encouraged me to run again. They indicated they support my efforts to exhibit stability and cohesion and stability to the public schools and the school board. Finally, I want to continue being a part of a Duluth which prospers and moves forward. For this to happen, there has to be strong public schools. I believe very strongly that public schools are as much a part of infrastructure as our police and fire departments, good medical institutions, and good roads. People and businesses are more likely to come here and stay here if these things are present. Now, we have many things to be proud of in ISD 709. We have excellent teachers and staff. We've instituted immersion programs in Ojibwe and Spanish. We have very excellent facilities. Our career and technical education department is growing. We collaborate with local colleges and universities for advanced classes. We have community school programs in three of our schools, which are role models for the state, and our online education program is growing, and in fact, about 20% of the students enrolled are not from this district. However, I don't want to minimize the challenges and opportunities we have for improvement. We need to ensure equity and opportunity for all students across the district. We have to obtain maximum and efficient use of our school sites, including balancing class sizes, ensuring course availability of all of our sites, and we are conducting a boundary study. We're also hiring a new superintendent. We have continued financial challenges, as do most districts in the state, and we need to deal with our properties such as historical Old Central and the newer Old Central property. Finally, a school board member only has influence as part of a group, one vote out of seven, and we only vote on issues of governance and policy. We do not administer the district. This could be frustrating both to school board members and to the community, but I believe the school board has to come together as a group, not dwell on personal issues, and keep our focus where it should be, on the success of students and staff. Thank you very much.
Duluth schools have a lot of big issues in front of them. Re-boundary between the different Rebounding between the different schools, class size, an issue for the last four or five years, making sure that our district is fair between the eastern schools, the western schools, rich children, children who weren't so rich. And I've been on the school board before, going back 30 years. I consider myself a little bit like presidential candidate Elizabeth Warren. I have a plan for just about everything, at least up here in my head. The problem is, there are going to be seven of us on the school board, and we all have to agree, and it would be nice if we checked with our administrators and our teachers and our families first to make sure that whatever we were going to do isn't going to disrupt the city any more than it's been disrupted in recent years. I'm always happy to reintroduce myself every election. I've been running for office for 30 years, so you poor voters have had a lot of time to get to know me, and I've spent 12 of those years on the Duluth School Board. The kind of guy I am, I roll up my sleeves and do what needs to be done in the community. I've donated blood six times a year at Memorial Blood Bank, serve lunch and breakfast at the Damiano Center and at Chum, and of course, I've served on the school board. I look a little shabby right now because a few minutes ago, I hopped off the roof at my church, to where I've been spending the summer, taking down storm windows and painting the window casings, and I'll be going back to that as soon as I finish this little taping. I'm in the process now, talking about rolling your sleeves up, of signing up to be a substitute teacher. Our school district is desperately short of substitute teachers right now, and it's what I trained to do many, many years ago, and I'd like to get back in the classroom because I like kids, I like public schools, and I think public education is critical, and it's something that I can help the school district with. I've been boring people silly for the last 30 years about all the things that we ought to have in public education, and I'm like everybody else. I know it's important, I want it done well, and sometimes I get pretty passionate when I'm not happy about the direction that our school district or public education takes, whether that's on the national level or locally. I rattled a few cages not long ago when I discovered that basically what we had done was we traded 100 teachers to have brand-new buildings. The teaching is a people profession. If you don't have enough teachers and people and caretakers to take care of the kids, they're going to get a lesser education than they deserve. I'd like to get back on the Duluth School Board. As I said, like Elizabeth Warren, I've got lots of plans. I'm really a much more agreeable person than sometimes the headlines indicate that I am, and I really think that we're heading into a new era on the school board. We're going to have a new school superintendent shortly, a new school board. I think we can address some of those issues that I spelled out at the very beginning, and I'd like to be a part of all of that. But, let's face it, that decision is up to you. I'm Harry Welty. Thanks for listening.
Hello, my name is Paul Sandholm, and I am running for the Duluth School Board in District 3 for the upcoming Tuesday, November 5 election. To start, a little bit about me. Before moving to Duluth with my family in 1992, I had worked for 14 years in the semiconductor industry as a process engineer making computer chips. The relocation to Duluth allowed me to change careers, and in following my parents' footsteps, I became a teacher. I attended UMD to finish the undergraduate requirements for a middle school science teaching license, and I started my career at Ordin Middle School and East High School in 1995. In 1999, I moved to an eighth-grade earth science teaching position at the Morgan Park School. By 2002, I had completed my master's degree in education at UMD with a focus on understanding and generating student interest in the sciences. When Morgan Park closed, I moved to the new Lincoln Park School, along with most of my colleagues, and had the opportunity to teach science in safe, modern, and technically fit classrooms. I retired from my ISD 709 teaching position in January of 2017. After some post-retirement travel, I signed up as a substitute teacher with the Duluth School District. My first-year goal as a substitute was to teach at every grade level and at least once in every school across the entire Duluth School District. It was a fun and refreshing experience. I had the opportunity to meet and work with many great students, teachers, administrators, paraprofessionals, other building helpers across the district that run our schools and keep them safe and operating smoothly. It truly does take a village to educate and support our young students. I enjoyed a rewarding coaching career at Duluth Central High School, working with the boys and girls tennis teams. I also coached the boys and girls teams through the transition and merger with Denfeld High School. Those years hold fond memories as I truly enjoyed the student spirit and togetherness of the athletes in competition and in practice. I also had the opportunity to serve as the golf coach at Denfeld High School for four years, and I continue to follow the progress of former students and former student-athletes and the hunter teams, as well as my former golfers that I coach to this day. Other community service experiences include being a club coordinator and coach for East Recreational Soccer. I also served on the AYSA Board of Directors for eight-plus years, with many dedicated and caring people keeping the sport of soccer healthy and safe for our participating young boys and girls. I also served as assistant scoutmaster for Boy Scout Troop 44 in the Central Hillside. Why one for the Duluth School Board? My wife and I have two sons who have truly benefited from their public education with the Duluth Public Schools. We are very grateful for spending much of our lives in the city of Duluth and to know so many dedicated and caring people living and working here. I view this opportunity, serving on the ISD 709 School Board, as possibly my last calling in a life of service and helping others. It's my past experiences and personal education within the district that I believe makes me a good candidate for representing the community and District 3 on the Duluth School Board. Thank you.
My name is Lauren Martel, and I've lived in Duluth for 27 years. I own a small business, and my wife was a teacher. When we first arrived in town, I was like many other people. I was a DFLer who voted for every school referendum. Even as a board candidate in 2011, I supported all three tiers of the ballot referendum. I took a lot of heat and lost a lot of votes, but the district had just laid off 35 teachers and reduced the hours of 13 more. Counting retiree positions left on field, more than 70 teachers were lost that year to balance a $6 million deficit. The year before, 46 more teacher positions had been lost to adjust to a $4.5 million deficit. I support public education and was worried about the long-term viability of our public school district. I was convinced district leadership was on the wrong path and told everyone I would change that path if elected. Our school district is still on that wrong path, and we now need a change more than ever. The citizens of Duluth have been very generous, but district leadership has been very reckless with the public's money. In a small, modest town of 86,000, our school district has spent a billion and a half dollars on operations and facilities in 10 years, and the organization is still broke and uncompetitive in the educational marketplace. A huge capital investment of hundreds of millions of dollars only managed to deepen the east-west divide of the city and drive families away. All the money spent was supposed to stabilize enrollment at 9,600 students. Instead, the enrollment for this year is projection is 8,116. That differential equates to $9.4 million lost in annual state aid just from the basic education formula alone. The school board keeps raising taxes to try to make up the difference. The district's tax levy has risen from $11.9 million to $39.8 million in about a dozen years, and the organization is still broke and lacking many classroom essentials. The majority of our town citizens could see these problems coming, but the town citizens were never listened to. It is time for the public's opinion to be respected. This is the 10th time I've been out in 11 years knocking on doors, talking to citizens about our school district, and I have never seen the public more disillusioned. Our citizens are being burdened by an ever-increasing tax bill, and all they can see is a mess. We've been stuck in the same rut long enough, and it is time for a reassessment of the situation and a frank, honest, and humble conversation with the people of this city. Nearly every person I speak to is tired of excuses and spin. Board members have lately been pleading for patience while they quote, "turn the ship around." How the ship gets so far off course to begin with? Without a 20.5% tax increase this year, the ship would have sunk. ISD 709 would be in statutory operating debt status right now. The public looks at the central campus, three multimillion-dollar buildings and 77 prime acres, sitting vacant for more than eight years, and has good reason to doubt the board's navigational skills. Everything I predicted a decade ago has come true, and this is the future warning everyone again. We are poised to discard central property for virtually no profit at all, and 15 years down the road, we will have to buy prime central property and start all over again. The district is now spending more than $14,000 a year to lease space in the old Washington School for early childhood education. The justification for this expense is that there isn't any educational space available in the center of the city. That argument, like so much of what we've heard from district leadership, makes no sense. We need a new assessment of this situation. We need new ideas allowed into the discussion. There are moves we can make to turn this misguided venture around, but first, we need a change in the boardroom. Thank you.